Good afternoon, everyone. Apparently several people wanted to say good morning when we got here. Several, it seems to be a disease today, but anyway. Welcome to our meeting. Today is July 25th, the regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, and we are looking for invocation. We're going to have Justin Strickland, one of my favorite people. He was at the side of my father when he passed away. And then we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance with Gary Mock. Sorry, I'm drowning in paperwork here. And Gary is a 65-66 Vietnam and Cambodia Joint Navy-Marine Coast Guard Operation Market Time 1967 diverted to render aid to USS Liberty after Israeli attack on the Six-Day War in Combat Communications Unit, Little Creek, Virginia. He is also one of my absolute favorite people, and we thank you for your service, and go Navy. All right, Justin? If you're able to rise, please do so.
Thank you, Madam Vice, for the opportunity today. You would all join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you grateful and thankful for this day. I thank you so much for all of the county officials and all of the people who are here to serve this great community. And Father, it would behoove us to remember that our Madam Chair is out recovering from surgery. And Father, today we ask you that you would extend your arms of healing and grace her way today. Father, we ask you that you would allow healing to be quick and peaceful. And Father, we pray that you would bring her back, back to where she belongs, right here on this diocese. And Father, we thank you so much for what you will do today and accomplish during this business, and I ask you that you would grant every one of these fine commissioners the ability to make decisions with wisdom and understanding for the community that they serve. And Father, I ask you that you would just bless them for the time and the sacrifices that they make. We are better because of them. Lord, we ask you that you would just be with them and be with us all today, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Chief Petty Officer Mock.
A pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. All right, clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 25th day of July 2023. In attendance are First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond Lynn.
Thank you. And we're looking for a motion for A4 approval of agenda. However, Steve, would you like to say what the additions are?
The first one is B9. Additional information, set a public hearing for proposed changes to transit services deviated fixed routes. We're going to cancel setting a public hearing on August 8, 2023, at 1:50 p.m., and set the public hearing on August 22, 2023, at 1:40 p.m. Item number E2, additional information for budget transfers. The budget transfer update, correct from the amount of $182,300 to $180,000 for the gas tax five-year capital projects technical services. Additional item E12, business associate agreement. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute the business associate agreement between Citrus County, Florida and McDonald-Hopkins, PLC. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as corrected.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, consent agenda. Would someone like to take that in its entirety or pull anything?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any board discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I love this proclamation.
Motion to approve item C1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Join me down there.
Will those individuals representing Purple Heart Day please come forward? Whereas the Purple Heart, originally known as the Military Badge of Merit, was established by the General Orders of General George Washington 241 years ago on August 7, 1782, and is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. The War Department first adopted the Purple Heart as a combat award on February 22, 1932, exclusively for those members of the armed forces who were killed, died of wounds, or wounded by an enemy instrument of war. And whereas the National Purple Heart Hall of Honor estimated that 1.8 million members of the Armed Forces of the United States have been awarded the Purple Heart and merit the reverence of their fellow countrymen for their selfless sacrifices in defense of our republic and its cherished freedoms. And whereas the Governor of Florida enacted legislation passed by the Florida Legislature in 2012, designating August 7 of each year as Purple Heart Day. Citrus County is a Purple Heart County and home to 17 designated Purple Heart entities that have pledged their support of the proud legacy of the Purple Heart. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby recognize the 241st anniversary of the Purple Heart and its proud legacy by proclaiming August 7, 2023, as Purple Heart Day in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 25th day of July 2023.
I'm Richard Hunt, Commander, Chapter 776, Aaron A. Weaver, Military Order, the Purple Heart. I am so honored to be here today individually, as is our group. We are in the best city of the best county of the best state of the best nation in the world. This county for veterans, I don't know of any place, anywhere, that does it better. We are just so honored and thrilled to be here, and thank you very much.
All right, it is now time for open to the public. Would anybody care to address the board? You get three minutes. Keep an eye on the clock. Five minutes for...
We'll be shorter.
Okay.
My name is Joe Meek. I'm the Mayor, Crystal River, and it is an honor and a privilege for us to be here today. The attorney, come on, let's go.
Really, Denise?
Yes. Few things. One, we just want to extend our thoughts and prayers to Commissioner Chairwoman Schlebach. We wish her well. We're thinking and praying for her, and so we love her and look forward to her coming back. Also to thank Steve Howard for all that he's doing. Couldn't ask for a better partner. He's been fantastic for us and a great representative of the county. So thank you, sir, for all that you're doing. Why we're here today is to officially introduce you all to our new city manager, Mr. Doug Baber, and he is joining us. We're very excited. His first day was yesterday, so he's hitting the ground running. He's already taking credit for things. If the Tampa General thing works out with Seven Rivers, it was because of him. If not, it was because of Ken. That's what we're going to say. But we're going to miss Ken. He's got a few days left retiring. He's just done a great job, and Doug's going to continue that partnership, and we want you all to know if there's anything that we can do to partner with you and continue that great partnership, we want to do it. So just want to introduce Doug, and if he can say a few words, and we'll be out of here.
Absolutely.
Put me on the spot a little bit. Madam Chair, thank you for having me today. I look forward to working with the administration here. I'm excited to be a part of Citrus County and just looking forward to what's going to happen further as we continue to do more and more in Crystal River and all throughout the county. So thank you very much for your time.
Nice to meet you, and welcome.
So as Doug is scooting in, I'm scooting out. So I really treasure my time spent with you all. The bond and the camaraderie between the cities and the county have just grown since I've been here, and especially with Steve and Denise here and all of you. I think this is really good times ahead for the entire Citrus County and both cities. So thank you all for everything you've done for the city of Crystal River.
Thanks, Ken. Doug, you got big shoes to fill. He did a good job.
He's not going very far.
All right, would anybody else like to address the board? Okay, this is, I think, only happened once in two and a half years. Seriously. Okay. Now I have to pivot. All right, we're on to E1. Mr. Howard? Regular business?
Yes.
E1, A through something.
I'll make a motion to approve E1, A through...
J.
J.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E2.
E2, this is for budget transfers, seeking approval to approve budget transfers for fire rescue housing and the supervise of elections for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Motion to approve, item E2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E3.
Is budget resolutions, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution amending, adopting Southwest Florida Water Management District, Old Homosassa West Septic to Sewer Project, state aid to libraries, and retired senior volunteer program, RSVP grant budgets for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Motion to approve E3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E4.
E4 is a facility use agreement, the School District of Citrus County, Florida. Approve and authorize the chairman to sign the facilities use agreement between the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, and Citrus County, Florida, allowing Citrus County Fire Rescue to temporarily use the facilities known as a LaCanto Driving Pad located at LaCanto High School during the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., November 13, 2023, to November 22, 2023.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E4. Second.
Motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E6.
Or E5?
Or E5, sorry.
E5. First Amendment to the Agreement between FDEP and Citrus County for the Old Homosassa East Septic to Sewer Project, seeking approval of that.
Motion to approve E5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're on to E6.
E6 is the release of retainage for ITB 21-143, and it's for A, B, and C.
Motion to approve E6, A, B, and C.
Second.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
E7 is the Core Civic Contract Monitoring Update for June 2023. Concur with the recommended action of the non-performance assessment of $30,000 against Core Civics' June 2023 invoice.
Motion to approve E7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I just want us to be thinking about this. I realize that it's hard for businesses to retain employees now, but we drastically reduced the fee for Core Civic, and I feel like instead of getting better, the level of staffing is getting worse. And at $30,000 minus all the employees that they would have to pay, I feel like this is just cost of doing business. That's not the goal that we want to reach. People have died for lack of care out there, lack of service. They have had to settle because of this, and we need to keep our eyeballs on this. So I don't know if we need a discussion of X amount of time before we raise the fee back up, but I feel like we're supposed to be working together. I know we have some things in the works.
We do.
And some ideas and a consultant. When is that coming, if I may ask?
They're close, and I can't give you an exact date, but they're close to having, I think, the language, amendment language, and then at some point that'll come before this board, but I know they've been working to get that accomplished. I think part of this was trying to work with Core Civic in good faith. Some of the issues that they're facing is the same around the nation, and as you know, I worked a little bit in that field, and some of those positions that they have are being taken away from the facility to the hospital and other things like that. So part of that was in good faith, trying to look at this. This has been a long time since agreement was looked at before, so I think we're getting closer to having this amendment done. I'm hopeful in the next 60 days that'll be accomplished, brought before this board, and then hopefully we'll get a resolution and move forward. The other thing they've agreed upon is a contract monitor position, which I think is needed, and they've agreed to that as well to fund that. So I think that's going to kind of come all forward in one package.
And I'm not asking my peers to move on anything today. I just think this is something we need to be thinking about. Obviously, if we're in a partnership and waiting the 60 days and for us to review what's coming down the pike, I just would like us, you know, to realize that at least one of us feels this is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. As you know, I engage on a routine basis with management at the jail, and I think some of the confusion actually comes in how the contract describes postpositions. They haven't really lost anybody. It's just how they're having to move them around. And, you know, we've had some very deep conversations about behavioral health, and currently at that facility right now are 34 people with severe mental health issues. One of the things that, you know, I've started the conversation on, and hopefully we're going to work through this, is to potentially get a mental health court reestablished here in the county and try to work this case, because we're incarcerating people with mental health issues as opposed to kind of what we're doing with Livestream, getting that upfront care and then the continuum of care. They're getting incarcerated, they're getting in trouble. Out of those 34 inmates, there are four that are juveniles, and there's 15 of the inmates right now have intense mental health, and they're on psychotropic drugs. So they have to actually sequester some of these people, put in, assign people to them. They're, you know, cutting, banging their heads on walls. I mean, it is a big deal. So I think what we've done with Livestream, our partnership with Langley, you know, partnership with the Sheriff's Office, you know, we've got to address the mental health component of this, because as opposed to incarcerating them, we have to find how we're actually going to address this, not just in Citrus County, but across our state and across the nation, so.
Commissioner Kennard, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right.
I just want to thank Commissioner Bays for getting all that information.
So as y'all are aware, I just got back from National Association of Counties, and I took copious notes on the mental health presentations, and so when I have a breather, I'm going to do the full report on everything learned at NACO, other resources, and we'll get that to the board through appropriate channels that have, of course, public record. One of the most, one of our keynote speakers was a really powerful person that will be in the briefing, but he said, when we, and I've heard you say this, I know you're aware of it, when we closed the asylums in the middle of the last century, around the '70s, we just turned all these mentally ill people out onto the street, and he was very blunt. He said they ended up in one of four places: nursing homes, jail, street, morgue. That's it. That's where all of the mentally ill ended up. And so the, I think it's the LA County Jail is the, and one in New York, are the two largest mental health institutions in the country, and they're both in jails, which I think is absolutely appalling. So thanks for bringing it up. There's going to be, this is a very long fix, unfortunately, but appreciate it. So any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E8.
E8, this is Information Sharing Access Agreement, seeking approval to approve and authorize the chairman to execute the agreement.
Motion to approve E8.
Second.
You'll call whichever one, right? We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E9.
This is the Amendment to the Collective Bargaining Agreement, Local 4562 Professional Firefighters of Citrus County Rank and File, firefighters, driver engineers, and fire inspectors, seeking approval for A, B, and C.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E9, A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E10.
This is the Sheriff's Office Budget Amendment, seeking approval to approve the budget transfers to amend the Sheriff's Office General Operations, the law enforcement impact fee budgets for the addition of 10 sworn law enforcement positions.
Motion to approve E10.
Second.
Any public comment? Sheriff, would you like to say anything? Nope. All right. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E11.
Approval for Policy and Procedures for Establishing Slow Speed in Quiet Zones.
Motion to approve E11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E12.
This is a Business Associate Agreement, seeking approval and to authorize the chairman to execute the Business Associate Agreement between Citrus County, Florida and McDonald-Hopkins, PLC.
Looking for a motion, anyone?
Motion to approve E12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, F.
Two items. The Halls River Road Multi-Purpose Path Update. Department of Transportation was contacted and advised that county staff will manage the project, and the Department of Transportation will be working on the project funding agreement, and will update the board as that becomes available. The other item is number six, was also updated. This was discussed at the 7/11/23 VOC meeting, and it was removed from the list, and this is for evaluate further potential changes to water setbacks and construction and pool cages. Asked for removal of those, and that's all. Updates at this time.
Okay, looking for a motion? Or no? No motion on that?
This information.
No change, got it. Sorry, I'm shuffling papers, trying to, this meeting is moving faster than I'm able to get organized. All right, Mr. Howard?
The next are presentations, public hearings.
Do you have anything? We're going to have to skip over...
I don't have anything else.
Okay, we're going to have to skip over the hearings.
Yes. We're going along pretty quick.
Yep. Thank you. All right, Mr. Howard, I1.
I1 is the Special Library District Advisory Board, accept resignation, announce vacancies, and seek approval of A, B, and C.
It actually says announcement only, no vote? On mine?
Do I have to accept the resignation? It's just an announcement, I believe, right?
Yeah, it's just accept resignation, announce vacancy. It says no vote on mine. Denise? Okay, all right.
No vote.
Okay. Committee reports. Anyone want to go?
I don't know where it's at.
Bays?
Is this where we talk about what we want?
No, this is committee reports, and then we go on to you. Committee report?
No committee report.
Okay, well, I already sort of gave my NACO one, so we'll move on to K, which is Commissioner Finnegan.
Okay, I don't have anything on here, but I think probably some of us, maybe some people in the audience, I don't know, want to talk about the 7/11. We've been getting some email on that.
Yes.
That's my district. We need to straighten out some information and see if we can make a difference. We have some ideas moving forward. I've been gathering some information. First of all, a constituent brought to us that we had a vacation on that property, which we did, and that we did not know that that was the 7/11, but I don't want staff taking the heat for that, because we absolutely did know that was the 7/11, or we all should have known. I remember the email that came out that I read to my husband, that Joanna Katu sent out, "Look, this is what's happening." And we saw that that was going there, and then I remember it being backup information. I was 99.9% sure I heard the words coming out of her mouth at the meeting, and Steve checked on that, and yes, she told us all, so we knew. But for those that are wondering, how could we do that for this board? And I'll probably say for all of us, and you can, all can correct me when it's your turn. When it came to us, we felt like we were doing a really good thing. We were vacating pipes that provided no stormwater at all to make sure that that property had good adequate stormwater drainage on there. So what we did was, in our minds, probably a very good thing for that piece of land. I live not that far from there, and I live on the river, and I'm a member of the Homosassa River Alliance, and some of those members have spoke out against that. So people are wondering, well, how did that commissioner not, you know, realize? And this is what I could probably, I want to say for all of us. When you have commercial property that's zoned, which it is, commercial on US 19, it's not, that property does not butt up to the river. It seems in your head that it's a distance from the river. So I don't know that any of us were probably thinking at that time, anything different at that time, about underground tanks. I know I wasn't, and there is a defunct gas station, same side of 19, just a little further down, that was there for years and years and years. And when that was no longer a gas station, nobody said, "Hey, county, you need to change your land use. Someone might want to buy that and put a gas station there." So our land use, our codes, they never changed. So this property, for Citrus County, and Eric, if, you know, you could probably say this a lot better than me later, but it can be used for that. Now, we, or the county, has approved clearing the site, has approved building, and I learned last night, just got approved for a temporary pole for power. We, and the county, does not, we cannot approve tanks. We do not regulate that. That all comes from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. That being said, I have probably learned in the last couple of weeks, things, and not enough information, I'll still learn, about spring sheds and environmentally sensitive karst systems that probably no one up here even realized when that was even on the agenda. Again, because in our heads, there was already pumps nearby, probably closer, and I brought this up. Why would I think about that? All the people, we all have boats, and we all fuel right on the river at the marinas, so none of that was in my head, and probably none of our heads. But when you know better, you do better. So I sat with staff and our very knowledgeable attorney, and in the future, if this board has the pleasure of doing so, we can make a difference for the future. We can do. We can do a land use change. Am I saying that right, Denise? Yes. And, but it's not going to be, or it cannot be, U S nineteen as a divider. It would need to be scientific, like environmentally sensitive karst areas, or maybe spring shed. We'll have to figure out the language, and then we'll need help identifying certain businesses that maybe we wouldn't want on those areas because it could potentially affect the springs. Now, my good friend Mike sitting over here did a nice article because, you know, somebody had inquired in an email to all of us, don't talk to engineers, talk to a biologist. So, I went to an environmentalist, I thought, who better? That assured me that all the provisions that are put in place would be safe. But my good friend, very good dear friend, Frank Coppici, who is the head of the Homosassa River Alliance, is on the other end telling me, Diana, you know, it, it may be a once in a lifetime thing. No one thought they could sink the Titanic and it happened. So, I think on the other side, he realizes, and concerned citizens realize, this could be a one in a million, nothing bad could ever happen. It hasn't happened. We have gas stations literally in Crystal River, like on, on a spring run. But he makes a very valid point when he says it only takes one time of destruction. So, yes, I, I feel like, if the tanks were there, I wouldn't have known. I don't think drastically anything's happening. But in the future, if we wanna be very proactive, because I feel like now we're being reactive, we can make positive change for the future. And that is something that we as a board will have to talk about if we, if we wanna do that. And obviously, Frank, our economic development director's not here, and I'm sure he could help us with certain businesses that would provide maybe a higher risk of environmental impact than others, but it's going to take some work. So, in the meantime, unless this board, or I've met with staff and our attorney, doesn't have an idea to back this up, but, you know, I've encouraged, you know, D E P. Last week, they didn't have the permit yet. It wasn't permit pending, permit pending. But seven eleven, and I know Frank has already reached out, Frank Coppici with Homosassa River Alliance, wrote a very nice letter to them explaining, because I'm sure that business entity did not realize just as it's not budding up against water, so, and it is on a commercial highway. So, that may have to be figured out differently than what we can do for the future. But I think that we could find remedies moving ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Anybody would like to talk about that? Commissioner Bays?
Commissioner Finnegan, I agree with you. We all have some, except for Jeff, he was on, he wasn't here. We all voted for it. However, I got the same emails that you did. I went on, did a little research. And I actually sat on the Springs Steering Committee, which we meet tomorrow. If anybody's interested, and they're free to go down and put their public comment in at two P M in Brooksfield. But I did do a little research, and, and I, I guess the one thing I would like is a consensus from this board to actually identify some of our environmental impacts. And let's go ahead and, and, you know, direct staff to make some of those changes in our L D C or our comp plan so that we don't end up back here. You know, the one thing I hear over and over is we have all this growth coming, and we want good, smart growth. I mean, we, we want to be very cautious in the way that we develop Citrus County and be mindful of the environmental impacts. One of the things that was a little concerning to me as I dug into this, when you talk about the risk factors on flooding, we all know that nineteen is a high coastal flood zone. And I, I ran this strictly on Homosassa Springs. And I was, little staggering news here, but residential is considered a major risk. And out of six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine homes, forty-seven hundred and seventeen are at major risk. Roads, the same thing, is a minor risk. Commercial is a severe risk. Critical infrastructure is a severe risk, three out of three. And social facilities are also a major risk, six out of eight. So, by, by these demographics that have been put together by some very smart people on the Homosassa Springs, I think it's our diligence that we need to put forth to make sure that we're ahead of this curve and we can get those into our land development code and into our comp plans so that we don't have these in the future. Because I do believe that Citrus County is a jewel. I believe that we have our rivers on the west side of our county, and we have our lakes. And we need to be very mindful of, of the precious resources that we have that God's given us.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Canard?
As we start down in, or get into this discussion, we don't, I don't feel like we need to reinvent the wheel in identifying environmentally sensitive areas. D E P has already outlined essentially our entire county as a primary focus area for protecting the springs. So, utilizing their own guidelines in that area could potentially direct any of these types of projects right back to the board for some type of special permission. Or I, I, I think there's probably a, a way that, that, that it could be written so that these types of projects did not have development by right, just because it's zoned there. If it falls within the P F A, then it needs, you know, those, those types of projects need to come to the board and have a very public discussion about what's going in the ground that could potentially impact one of our first magnitude springs.
Anything further?
Thank you. I mean, I think everyone's had some good ideas. I think we're all in the same boat. And for those of you out there that are with, you know, at Homosassa and the River Alliance, I think we're all trying to help, you know, but it's all just not us. We, you know, this falls on, on state, and we will collectively do better in the future.
Well, the beautiful thing about being chair is that when your colleagues knock it out of the park, there's not much left to say. So, I agree with all three of them, and this is the nature coast, and we are, we have an insane growth rate right now. We're hearing about it from citizens that they don't want this level of growth. So, I want everybody to understand that the growth is by and large going exactly where we want it, which is on the central wood ridge away from the coastal areas. And you've heard us be, if you're a, a fan of the B O C C and following us, we've been pretty careful about mini-storage and car washes. And I, I think that we also need to be very careful about where we put gas stations. So, Commissioner Canard, bringing it in for a landing as far as what the next steps are, I think is exactly right, that those need to come back before us. It should not be a by-right development whenever it's a seriously environmentally sensitive area. So, well done. Commissioner Canard, L one.
Yeah, just looking for a, an update on where we're at with moving that contract along so it can be before us to approve and help keep Livestream moving in a good direction.
Anyone? Update?
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes. So, just, we've, we've got it drafted. I think that we put together a product that both sides can agree to. We had a conference call with the attorney for Livestream. It was a very positive call. There were a couple of things that they identified they wanted changed in the contract, very minor things that I don't think that we would have trouble with. So, I'm waiting for them to make their changes and bring it back, send it back, and then we'll get it to the board. It was a very, very productive telephone conference.
Excellent.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Do we have a timeline for when we'll see it?
I don't, the, we left the phone call that the attorney for Livestream was going to make changes and get them back to me. I have not gotten them back, and I think the call was, sorry, I'll find when the call was. I think it was last week. The meeting was on the seventeenth, and I have not gotten those changes back. I would expect to get them any day.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, L two, Barge Canal.
Let's see if Mary is available to come forward. One thing, I think Veronica, let's see if Veronica's in the audience. She was, okay. We did give these to the board, okay. One thing I did give each of you was just a status update on the strategic planning policy agenda, twenty twenty-three targets for action. And the Barge Canal is actually in this information as well as everything else. Just to kind of give you an update of where all the milestones, activities that we are moving forward with the direction of this board.
Good afternoon, Mary Jensen, Public Works Director. As far as the Barge Canal, the consultant is moving ahead with a hundred percent drawings. The kind of cool thing we were able to do recently is we divided it into a phase one and phase two design. The whole design is being, the whole phase one and phase two are being designed. But the, the neat thing is, is we're able to leave the D R A in the final location and use that in phase one before they had a temporary D R A, and then they were gonna move it and move it to the phase two. So, we were able to save money and, and do that permanently. So, that's kind of exciting. Efficiency and things when people get together. We are moving forward with the permits. The permits now should take anywhere from six to nine months, up to a year max, but they're working on those. So, hopefully, we're hoping for more the six-year or six-month timeframe. And then I believe that it got put out of this year's budget. So, it, it's not in this coming year's budget for the Barge Canal, so, and I'm not sure if you want me to talk about that, or...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, it got pulled from the budget. Who pulled it from the budget?
I, I'm, I'm not part of that. I don't know.
Let's have Erin come forward just to talk about what, why, and why not? It's because of the expenses that'd be associated with, since we're in design this next year.
So, the funding for the Barge Canal got bumped out one more year. There are several things we could do. When we present the preliminary budget tomorrow, we can have a discussion regarding reserves and putting funding back in. The two other options we looked at was using true funding that will come in April when we finish the A C F R. Also, we discuss legislative appropriations, so that land is actually state land. And when our lease ends, it will revert back to the state. So, we're hoping they would wanna participate as well in paying for that.
How much, how much was in the budget that was pulled?
There was, I believe it was approximately two and a half million that was bumped.
Okay.
And I think in total, there's five and a half that is going to be needed. So, it was being phased over years.
Alright, so have we gotten the, have we gotten the money from the Restore Act funds yet for the Barge Canal boat ramp?
No. So, what they require is that we have the design done, and obviously the permits in which we have. But then they're also gonna want to require a letter be signed stating that we are going to fund the remainder of that project.
So, we don't, we don't have the design done yet. Have we, I hear, I heard something about permits. Have we applied for the permits? So, we have applied. The design's not done yet, but we're moving towards a hundred percent. And we won't go into a public discussion about who pulled it from the, from the budget, but that, that should have been a board discussion and decision.
So, that's part of what we're going to discuss tomorrow to make that budget balance. So, there were several projects, like we had discussed, gas tax. Some of those projects had to be bumped or revised. And so, there were some fire the same, and part of that also is general funds. So, Barge Cow being one of them. The morgue is also in there, and we're hoping they're going to have a discussion in August about the funding sources for that. And that might be lower, so that might be another place where we can add funding to that. So, there are money, there is money in reserves, but it's also, it's not going to fund all of the five and a half million dollars that is going to be required. And I think when the board had looked at it, when we decided to do a hundred percent design, it was kind of, once design is completed, we'll figure out the total of the funding. So, like I said, the two and a half million would not be, at least at this estimate, enough to complete that project. So, we had two and a half million next year, two and a half the year after that. But I don't know what the final estimate, do they have a final yet?
I didn't hear.
We don't have, they're close to a final estimate, so she'll email that when she gets it. So, it might be even more than the five and a half million dollars.
So, the budget that it got pulled from is the one that we're currently working on, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget? So, the soonest that there would be any funding for construction for this project is the twenty-four, twenty-five year?
Right. And that's not even all of the funding that's needed. So, there, there will need to be a discussion about how the rest of it will be funded. And then if the estimate comes in higher than that, how the remainder of that will be funded.
Alright, it sounds, sounds like we need to have a longer, I mean, I won't keep going today, but it sounds like we need to have a much longer discussion about this and find some funding mechanisms that can be used to get this project moving. I'm glad to hear that we're finally going through design. I will tell you that in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, when, when I was actually opposed to this boat ramp and trying to stop the project, I was told by people who are no longer here that the design is done, we've got permits in hand, and it would be foolish to stop now. Obviously, back then, that's five years ago, design was not done, nor did we have permits in hand. The boat ramp is needed. It's needed now, and as soon as Crystal River gets the green light to move forward with their River Walk, there's another boat ramp that's gonna get closed. We have got to get this project moving. Like the board, I believe, when Commissioner Bays was on there last time, didn't you guys build the road off of Highway nineteen to access this new boat ramp? It is just sat there, and no, nobody has taken the bull by the horns on this thing, and it needs to happen. I was, I was disappointed to hear that, that, that had gotten pulled from, from this next year's budget.
Mr. Bays?
Thank you. Maybe you can help me exactly what is being designed?
And is it already funded, the design?
What is being funded right now for design is, we're doing the entire design for phase one and phase two. So, phase one is, I wish I would have brought the material, but phase one is like three catwalks, basically, the docks. They're doing the entire concrete boat ramp, if you will. And then they're doing the front portion where you can park, and then they would do the back D R A. The, the middle, large portion that has a lot of stuff that needs to be removed, they're, they're gonna do that site work in the first construction phase, but they're not going to smooth it out and do a mass amount of site work for the parking. So, you'll have a, a lot more parking spaces. I think in the phase one is also the temporary, well, they're not temporary, but the bathrooms and things like that. If we ever get water there to be able to have, or septic sewer, if we ever get sewer there, we'll be able to do real bathrooms, but these are not gonna be real bathrooms because we don't have the utilities there.
So, what is, again, what is the total cost of the project?
I would have to get you all that information with design and construction. I was thinking it was more around the nine million, but I don't want you to quote me on that. I will, I will send an email to you and break it all down with that.
And, and how much did we have allocated by B P?
When we were talking about this back in sixteen seventeen, the total cost of the project, I believe, was five point three million.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know if it was two or three million from B P funds. I wanna say it was somewhere in that neighborhood, but I don't recall exactly how much, how much was coming from B P. I think there was that, and then there was funding in that same request, I believe, for the force main that I think D E P was gonna split with us going up nineteen. For some reason, I kept hearing those two projects together in our, in our BP funding requests. But thankfully, that Forest Main's moving along, but the boat ramp is not. So, or it doesn't seem to be anyway. I'm glad to hear at least we're working on the design, but there are an awful lot of boaters in the county ready to see that thing get moving.
Mr. Bayes?
Can we find out exactly what dollars are sitting in BP for our benefit? I'm going to tell you, I am in full support of moving this ahead faster rather than later. I've had some conversations with FWC. We have more resources in this county collectively than any other county that, for our district. And we lead the state in reckless operation. That includes the Keys. So this is, you know, with the amount of, or the lack thereof, I should say, of boat ramps and the available parking, it is just a heavy burden on our community. And I think it's, I mean, this project has been talked about since I was on the board back in, I think, 2012, 2013. And it's just, over and over, there's just projects that are being delayed. And the cost of inflation is not our friend. We keep deferring maintenance. We keep deferring projects. That has to stop. So I'm, I'm in full support of your consensus on moving this forward. This is something, I don't think it's an option for us. I think this is something that has to be done. I think, you know, there's several things I've, I've asked our attorney, what is the process for getting Airbnb registry? I think we need to know that. People are coming in, they're renting houses, they're buying them up, they're taking them off the market. And, you know, we have to be able to determine, is that really a benefit to us in what we collect? If somebody's renting a house, they're probably not going out to the restaurants, they're using up the rivers, they're taking our natural resources. And we, we need to start to decide where we're going with our community and how we're going to move forward. And then actually put the cost to it. You know, what are the, the overall public safety costs and the other costs that are driving cost up for the citizens that live here versus the people that are coming here? I appreciate what, when they're here, but I'm not sure there's an offset to that because right now we're building more houses than we are commercial development, and the budget is absolutely lopsided. So that, that's just a few of my thoughts in there, but I, I think this is something that we have got to get ahead of the curve. You know, it's roads. We've got to get to the residential roadway paving. We have to take care of these boat ramps and our rivers. And I think getting this boat ramp there will be a reliever for Homasasa and Crystal River. And start to move some of that traffic out of those rivers by boats is very important at this point.
Just a question for you all. I believe it was Commissioner Cannard. Last meeting, we were talking about the Homasasa multi-use path. And did I hear you correctly when you said, because, you know, we moved that back from FDOT to us, that's in the process to hopefully save us money? But I thought I heard you say something about maybe we need our own engineer.
Yeah.
Here. And it, I know, or I was told by staff that boards before us had decided to push everything out. But I don't know if that is a good time saver for us, and I don't know that it's cost effective. So, I mean, is that something we want to look at? Would we get our projects done less expensive and faster if we had our people doing the design?
I, I would, I would defer to staff, honestly, the directors and find out what does it take to move things, these things along? Is it, if, if we can even get an engineer, you know, if we can get these folks, the qualified folks to come in, you know what? Ken Franks out of a job. He's an engineer.
I've already been talking to him.
You know, I, I don't think that's a decision that we should make up here. We've got very qualified directors. Let's, let's make sure that they feel empowered to go to the county administrator and say, look, we're hearing the board loud and clear. We want to move these projects along. This is what I need for personnel. And then it's his job to come to us and say, this is what I need for funding. These are people that we need to get put in place.
I would definitely agree. That is the way it should work, but only because, Mary, you did say a board decided that. So I know like she wouldn't say, well, if a board decided, I'm just going to go against it. But we are a different board. So maybe that's something, you know, collectively, Steve and Mary could be thinking about. I, I don't know. I'm not an engineer. I don't know what's best for you or your team or your department. But, I mean, if we could save time and money and, you know, I'd, I'd like to hear that. Yeah. Not on the spot today, of course. I wouldn't do that to you, but something to think about for the future.
Commissioner Cannard?
Well, I'm happy to hear the, the support for this project. I will tell you, when this subject is brought up in any of the local tackle shops or conversations about our ramps, it is almost, it, it makes me wince because it is almost a running joke about how long this thing has been talked about. Are we ever going to see it? And I haven't really had an answer for them. So I, I would like to see us get this thing moving. Let's figure out a way to make it happen. And I think there are, there are resources out there. If not, then it's up to us to get it figured out. That rant needs to happen.
I was just going to say that I, I haven't weighed in yet. I am completely in concurrence that this needs to happen. As you know, in looking at the budget, we have an enormous amount of things that have to happen this year. And as Commissioner Bayes said, we are really lopsided with our tax structure in terms of residence, residential versus commercial, which costs a lot less to serve per dollar. Residents, we're actually upside down. It costs more to serve residential than it does in, that we get in taxes. So that's an issue. I would say that, taking the temperature of this board, I would say that we're a very forward-looking board that wants to be as efficient as humanly possible. So bring ideas, staff, to anything to be more efficient with our limited resources to push forward as well as get a handle on the growth and continue to get a handle on the growth. Mr. Howard?
I was going to say, you know, a, this Barge Canal, obviously, it's been going on for a long time. I heard this board loud and clear. One, one question I had for, I've got staff here, was, if it was taken out of the budget, what could you actually do construction-wise going into the next year? I know you still have the permitting, things like that. Is that actually, if we had the funding in place, could you actually do something the next year? The other thing is, I think, is a big, big thing that happened was the Coast Guard. I had some good discussions with the Coast Guard relocating from Yankee Town to there, and that's a catalyst event. And that's 28 personnel going there. So that's a big, big deal for this community to see that. And I think that's going to lead to more opportunity there with them as well. But it's something I'd be interested in bringing that back to the board because looking at our activities and milestones, it's showing the process for the bids and things like that, where it'd come to the board the following year. But I want to make sure what we could do.
So we cannot go out to bid unless we have all the funding. And I know that that's a legal requirement. If Erin was to talk about that.
That's part of why we were discussing. So next year, there was, I believe, about two and a half million. We'll give you the exact total tomorrow. And there is a certain amount from Restore. But in order to go out to bid to cut the PO to start construction, you actually need all of the funding. So it wouldn't just be that piece that we had pushed out. We will need to find a way to fund all of it for next year to be able to, to do that. And that's part of getting the final engineer estimate is are we going to need five and a half? Are we going to need six and a half to make that happen?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
At some point, and I, I don't think you necessarily have to get into it today. That's, that's good information. But I wonder if it's possible that we can, that we could bond anticipated revenues from launch fees specifically at that ramp or parking fees at that ramp. Because there, there will be an awful lot of folks from out of the county that'll use it. And, you know, given that it, that it's not constructed yet, we don't know exactly what those, what those revenues, what that revenue stream would amount to. But I think it would, it would take a, I think, anyway, this board passing a covenant to budget and appropriate to cover what that, what that revenue stream would not be. I would not be, I would not be in favor of using our current launch fees that we're collecting at different ramps for construction of that ramp, but rather the revenues generated specifically at that ramp to, to cover what the costs were to build it. So if there's a, if there's a way to make that happen, that may be, that may be an avenue to get construction of this thing paid for. Just a thought.
And I don't know if the county attorney knows if that's a possibility. It is something I can reach out and ask neighbors Giblin. I know they're doing that alternative revenue.
What, I was just about to ask, when is that coming in?
They were hoping for August. The latest, though, was October. So if you look at that packet for the strategic plan, it says October, but they're hoping for August.
So we, because we had discussed that at the briefing, that it's probably not going to be here before we're done with budget?
Well.
Or it could be.
It could be, but it wouldn't affect
Right.
the types of revenues that we would be able to collect for the fiscal year 24 budget.
Okay. Super. Anything else, Board? All right. Thank you. Going back to our H1. Mr. Howard?
Public hearing for Citrus Springs 2023 assessment area waterline extension. Ken is in the, Ken could come forward.
I think the land section does all these.
Do they? Okay. Just have him listed on here.
Are you doing? Okay. Susan here?
Board members, Ken Cheek, Water Resources Director. This is just our annual assessment for waterline projects that we do in Citrus Springs every year. Total this year is $2,700. That's pretty much typical for these.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cheek. So we're looking for a motion on H1, B, and C, I believe.
We have.
You have to have a public.
Oh, we have to. That's right.
Yeah, this is a public hearing.
Sorry, I'm still got my training wheels on. Okay.
Madam Vice Chair, while he's here, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Unrelated to this. Going back to the Barge Canal.
Mm-hmm.
What is the estimate in approximately to get the water and sewer up?
I did some very rough numbers for our conversation with the Coast Guard. I think I put it at about 15 or 16 million somewhere.
I think so too, yeah. And I think.
It's, there's, the projects that we have ongoing now with the Restore Act money, basically, it's further and with the bridge crossing to get to that. So it's more expensive than what we're doing now. I used those numbers to do an estimate, and it was in that range. So it's, it's not a small number.
But I think.
And crossing that bridge is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. I think there's an amazing opportunity with, with funding out there with the military potentially. I think they're interested in fire suppression and other things. So this could be another catalyst opportunity that I think we can, I've had discussions with our delegation about it already, but I think there is a potential opportunity, although it's a big number, but it's a big opportunity to pursue. And there's a lot of funding out there, and I think this is a good story to tell with the partnership with the Coast Guard, national security-related interest and things like that. It could be a win-win-win. So I'm very interested in working, continuing to work that avenue.
I think most of you are aware too, we did get some interest from some areas in Levy County that might want to be served too. They were trying to get water and sewer availability up there. I sat in several meetings with them. I think there's still some interest up there. It's just the, the numbers were never adding up in terms of benefit to cost to get there. Like I said, part of the issue is getting across that bridge. I did some research on that years ago. DOT was not real keen on us hanging our water and sewer lines on their bridge at that time. I think there might be some more potential with them now, but it's going to be a big challenge. Crossing the Barge Canal is a big deal.
And have, I, I know years ago, a lot of those wells had significant arsenic in them. I mean, have we gotten the water lines up to kind of address that issue, or is there still?
That's a good question. So, you know, we did the area just north of Crystal River, basically up 495 to, I can't think of the name of the road up there.
488?
No, we did not go that far. That was the area, that was the first area that we went to, and it was really to resolve that public health issue. The state brought all that money to the table. There was no cost directly to taxpayers or utility customers. The state brought that money to us and including some money for them to, to do hookups. The arsenic affected area is a wider area than that. It goes further north from the maps that I've seen. I'm not sure the areas north of the Barge Canal are so much of an issue, but the areas along 495, between that triangle, between 495 and 19, are the areas that were the biggest issue. We have not heard from the state whether they're willing to go further. We designed that system to have the potential to go further, which was what has allowed us to go up 19 now. And that 19 project would be interconnected if we did some more areas up in that direction. But we haven't gotten any communication from the state that they want to go further at this point. If you think about it, there's kind of a, a non, a, a, a lower level of development north of where we went to until you get back into that, whatever it is, Crystal River Estates or whatever, up there further to the north. And we've had some questions from people up there that have drilled wells that want it, but there just hasn't been any backing from the state at this point. Quite frankly, I haven't called and asked them if they want us to go further. It was really their project that we implemented for them rather than the other way around.
Well, again, as the commissioners, I mean, the administrators said, I think that there's a lot of opportunity out there right now. I just attended the environmental permitting conference, and I'm telling you, please, 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 staff, get it on your radar. It's every year, same time in July. It is the, the best money, best time, or best time I've ever spent doing anything of any conference. It was just incredible. So, you know, everything that I'm taking away from that, there's a lot of opportunity out there. We just, we just need to be asking and applying for it. I think there's a lot of money to be had at this point. And so going back to the Barge Canal, I would really like to see staff think big and start to move some of these projects along on their, on your initiative, you know, as we bring them to you and say, go, I mean, let's at least get it on the table. We can always back off and say, we don't want to go that far, but let's, let's be aggressive and go after it.
And get a shovel ready. That's the, the key is shovel ready.
Yeah. And we are off the public hearing, which at a time certain, but Commissioner Cannard, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, there's just a, a comment that Ken made that I wanted to chime in on. I would be all, all in favor of getting water and sewer up to the county line. I would not favor getting water across the county line. I, I would oppose that. Inglis and Yankee Town have certainly pursued a, a big dream of having their own collection and treatment system up there for sanitary sewer. And I don't think that has panned out. So certainly if they wanted to become a, a bulk customer of Citrus County Utilities for sewer only, then I think there's, there's something to be pursued there. And maybe that's something that it wouldn't be necessarily everything that they want, but we can't be taking water across the county line. That I would not be in favor of, so.
Agreed.
For the record, that's exactly the way I portrayed it to them. Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cheek. Madam Attorney?
For this one, which is H1, it would just be time to open up a public hearing, finding out if anyone had any comments on the assessment.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak on H1, Citrus Springs 2022 assessment area?
2023.
2023, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I get for not putting my glasses on.
How are y'all? I guess my first question is, we recently bought a home.
Sir, I'm sorry. We, we just need your name.
Tristan Morrison.
And you'll need to fill out a green card as well and you'll have three minutes. Watch, watch the clock.
Okay. So what, what does this pertain to? Is it houses that have already been built? Or vacant land?
Say whatever you want to say for three minutes and then we, then we respond.
Okay. And I mean, to Mr. Cheek's point, $2,700 may not seem like a lot to a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, the state that we're in right now with inflation and everything of that nature, 2,700 bucks is a lot. And even if you factor it out to the 15 years that they're saying, I mean, that bumps it to $4,300, you know? I mean, it, no matter which way you cut it, I work for a utility contractor. I know the cost of this stuff going in the ground and for, for this, I mean, I'm already connected. I already have water to my house. The fees have already been paid for that long before. There's been houses on that road for years. They didn't just put in water lines, but now I'm getting screwed, as the case may be, for this. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And state your name for the record to start.
Ms. Ricardo Trinidad. We got the same problem with neighbors. We got the same complaint that I don't agree with this assessment that you guys are doing, that we already have been paid for. That line's already been there. The house has already been built before we built our houses there. I think it's very unfair that we got to pay that money.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cheek, would you like to respond?
Yes, board members? This is only for areas that are served by the water lines we built this year. So if these two gentlemen are in areas where they say they already had water, they just need to get that information to us and they would not be in the assessment. So we're only assessing for projects that we did this year. As far as why we do them and how we do them, why we do them, I think you are all aware that we're subject to the Tavika agreement out there. So when we get a request, we're required to extend the water lines. It's not discretionary. This is one of those examples where we actually have used in-house engineering and in-house staff to build it. So this is pretty much as quick and as inexpensive as we can do it. Fortunately, we just lost our engineer for that, but I'll be doing them now. We can't, we can't delay in these type of projects to wait for somebody to do it for us. So that's why we do them in-house.
Thank you, Mr. Cheek.
We don't make money on these. It's exactly what it costs us to do it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Can, can I address you?
No, no, no. There's, your time at the mic is done, but you can get with staff quietly elsewhere. Yes.
I was just going to say, on packet page 841 is a, a map and a description of each of the streets that it applies to. So there's a discrete number of lots that this assessment applies to. So I'm not sure whether these gentlemen got that packet page 841, but that would show whether or not they were subject to it.
Okay. Thank you.
And also I think the guy asked, the gentleman asked whether it applies just to houses that are built. It applies to all properties along there.
All lots, yes. That way it's already paid for. If you buy a lot, it's in baked into the purchase price and you get, you build, build your house and it's already there.
Yeah, we pay this out of our reserves and we recover the money through the assessment.
Yep. All right. Anybody, any further public discussion on this? Madam Attorney? You don't need to read all this into the record or no?
No, not on the first one. They, this is just, no.
Okay. So we need a motion on B and C, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Madam Chair, a motion to approve H1A, B, and C. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H2.
Madam Chair, staff is here to make the presentation on this plat vacation and there's just a resolution that'll be submitted to your, to you for approval after the presentation.
Welcome, Ms. Kattu.
Hi. I don't know if the applicants are here or not. We deal so much on the internet and the phone. I don't know, but I'll go ahead and proceed. This is an application to vacate some platted utility and drainage easements. They lie on all of the lots in Crystal Manor Unit Number Three on the sides, and that's what we're dealing with here. So this is on North Marigold Terrace in Crystal Manor. Perhaps? There we go. Thank you. Technical difficulties. You can see Lot 20 and 21 on this map. The applicants do own both of those, Mr. and Mrs. Hayes. And what they're doing is constructing a home. So what this will do is remove the platted utility easements. They're not visible. There are no utilities in this. None of the utility companies had, had any comments on this or any concern, excuse me. And there were no concerns about removal of this easement. It also serves as a drainage easement. It's obviously not being used in that way. So staff and environmental health staff are recommending approval of this application.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to speak for or against this from the public? Come on up. Get three minutes at the mic. Please state your name for the record and you'll fill out a green card. You could do that after.
My name is Elizabeth Schmider. And
Please speak into the mic if you wouldn't. Thank you.
Sorry.
No worries.
My name is Elizabeth Schmider.
Mm-hmm.
And my question is for the vacation, the vacating of the requirements for vacating the plot easements. It's my understanding that those requirements, you have to have a letter from all utilities that may be in the area, including electric, water, cable, telephone, blah, blah, blah. I have property in Citrus Springs that have these same kind of easements. And when I spoke to the district engineer for, with the Kuchu River Electric Cooperative, he sent out a couple of gentlemen and they looked at my proposal and they said that they had no problem with me constructing the fence on it, but they wouldn't give me anything in writing. So I want to know how do I go about doing, putting an application in to vacate that? There aren't water lines on there on that particular side that I'm talking about. And even the electric runs along the back of the house, but I couldn't get anything in writing. So my question is, how do I put an application in? They're putting an application in and they wouldn't give me anything in writing. So this is why I came up.
So you're, you're not in, you're not opposed or in favor of this in particular? You just want information on your own property? Yes?
I'm, yeah.
So you can, thank you, and you can get with staff after we close this. Someone will, you'll be, Ms. Kattu will be able to help you when we close this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more? Any, anyone want to speak from the public? All right. Would a board like to make a motion? Or board discussion, rather? Excuse me? Any board discussion?
I just want, have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned drainage and I, I know I've gotten calls more particularly down in the Sugar Mill area. When they do these, as far as, are they required for any kind of a swell or drainage? I mean, I have people in the Sugar Mill Woods area that tell me they either filled them in during construction, they're not there, there's flooding issues from one property to another. And I just want to make sure that we're avoiding this issue.
Yeah. So not all the easements that come before you are drainage easements. This one happens to be a blanket throughout the plat utility drainage combo. And that's how Sugar Mill Woods is as well, parts of it. And when they're, when they come in for a vacation, we do have that reviewed. A lot of times they're not part of the stormwater system. They're just blanket on a, on a plat. Sometimes they are. If they have a swale or a berm or something, they're going to have to compensate. And sometimes it's very, very detailed that they have to put in another stormwater system to deal with moving that, removing that. So it's a case by case. So yeah, we don't let them fill in drainage swales or something. If somebody's doing that, you know, that's not related to the plat thing. We wouldn't approve that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion on H2B. I guess it's just B.
Madam Chair, motion to approve H2A and B.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. H3. Need to conduct a public hearing on the ordinance amendment relating to Beverly Hills MSBU.
Yes, ma'am. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance. And if, at your pleasure, I'll read that ordinance into the record.
Please.
Thank you. At the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida pertaining to Chapter 90, Beverly Hills Municipal Service Benefit Unit, amending Article 21, Section 90-834, entitled, authorizing special assessments on a per lot, per tract, or per acre basis, providing for severability, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, providing for inclusion into the code, and providing for an effective date.
Excellent. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this? Going once? Going twice? All right. Board?
Motion approved item H3A and B.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H4.
Yes, ma'am. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida pertaining to Chapter 90, Citrus Springs Municipal Service Benefit Unit, amending Article 16, I think, 1050, 16, Section 90-684, entitled, authorizing special assessments on a per lot, per tract, or per acre basis, providing for severability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for inclusion into the code, and providing for an effective date.
I do not have a B section on here. Adopt and authorize the chairman. I assume that needs to be part of that.
Yes, ma'am. It's, I think it's down the bottom.
It's, it's not on my copy.
Oh, yes, ma'am. But yes, it's A and B.
Okay.
Conduct the hearing and then adopt and authorize.
Adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance relating to Chapter 90 Beverly Hills.
Citrus Springs MSBU.
Oh, Citrus Springs. And it also says Beverly Hills in mine. Nice. Okay. All right. Would anyone from the public like to speak on the Citrus Springs MSBU? Okay. Going once? Going twice? Board?
Motion to approve. Oh, did anyone have any comments? Sorry. Motion to approve H4A and B.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any board discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there actually any agricultural lands in any of these public hearings that we're doing?
Yes. The reason that you're doing them is because there are ag properties. So if there were none, we wouldn't be. Well, when, when, when the legislature changed the law, the land section had to go through and look at what, what particular lots were affected or what particular parcels were affected. And we made changes to each of the, the necessary items. There, there are some, yeah, there are some ag out in Citrus Springs.
And just for public consumption, have we identified the dollar amount of what will be removed from these and what will have to come from Ad Valorm?
The last I had heard, the estimate was 40 something thousand, but that is a, a dated number. I don't, I don't see anyone from the land section. I don't know whether Mary has a more updated number, but it was about 40 something thousand the last time I heard. Does that, I see head shaking.
All right. That's good enough. I just, thank you.
All right. Any further board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H5.
Yes, ma'am. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida pertaining to Chapter 90, Solid Waste Municipal Service Benefit Unit, amending Article 17, Section 90-744, entitled, applicability of annual disposal service charge to tax exempt improved real property, providing for severability, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, providing for inclusion into the code, and providing for an effective date.
Would anyone from the public like to speak on the solid waste MSBU ordinance? Going once? Going twice? All right. We'll close the public portion. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve H5A and B. Second.
All right. I heard Commissioner Finnegan first. Commissioner Bays made the motion. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. H6.
Okay. And the longest ordinance that you're going to be asked to consider at the conclusion of this public hearing is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida relating to special assessments amending Article 1, Section 86-3 of the Citrus County Code of Ordinances pertaining to general findings, amending Article 2, Section 86-21 of the code pertaining to creation of assessment areas, amending Article 3, Section 86-34 of the code pertaining to general authority, amending Section 86-46 of the code pertaining to interim assessments, amending Section 8646.1 of the code pertaining to property abatement assessments, amending Article 6, Section 86-66 of the code pertaining to assessment, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing, providing for severability and providing, ooh, sorry. They changed it up on me for codification and for an effective date.
Excellent. That was a long one. Would anyone from the public like to speak on the ordinance relating to County Code, Chapter 86, Special Assessments? Going once? Going twice? Close the public hearing?
Madam Chair, a motion to approve H6A and B.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We're on to M. What do you have? Oh, I'm sorry.
May I just say something?
Yes.
So we all know that these were necessitated by a change in the legislature and I just want to give accolades to the land section. They worked their heinies off getting all of this put together and it was not easy. So.
Thank you. And for all the people watching out there, would you like to give a brief rundown of why we had to do this or someone?
Uh, I, I mean, basically the legislature just made a policy decision that lands that were in agricultural use would have no assessments. And the word assessment is very broad in the legislation. So that meant that any service assessments that we had, such as for fire protection, solid waste, I'm trying to think of what, what we've, we've done a bunch here and the different special assessments that the ag properties would not be subject to assessment. So we are having to go in and make sure we exempt those ag properties and change our ordinances to match what the legislation said.
Excellent. Thank you for that. All right. Commissioner Bays, M.
Um, just wanted to welcome Tampa General. Glad to have them come on board. Hopefully that means USF will become a partner in Citrus County. As most people realize or don't realize, there's no university that has ever laid stake to Citrus County. And I'm hopeful that this will be an opportunity to have that and that would, could potentially lead to helping with staffing of physicians. So as everybody knows, we have a shortage of physicians and this might be a good thing for us. So want to welcome them aboard. And as I said earlier, I did attend the environmental permitting conference. I can't say enough good things about it. It was wonderful. It was, every environmental agency in the state, all those that were retired, you know, John Stevenson, Herschel Vineyard. I mean, they're all, everybody's there, even the federal side of permitting and every attorney that's imaginable in the environmental world. So listening to all of them and how they think is very enlightening. So I appreciate going to that and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to my item and one, Immerness Village 4 update. Ms. Johnson, did you want to share then what you found out too?
Just a brief update. We continue to go out there every week and, and spot check and issue fines where necessary.
issue fines where necessary. And one administrative change we made is we had code enforcement under Building Department and Code Enforcement, and the Code Enforcement Department. We brought them all in together under one umbrella, so they all report to J.C. Charlton, who's the Code Enforcement Director. So when you get a complaint, we'll know exactly where it's coming from and who it goes to. So just make it streamlined and streamlined a little bit so it's a more consistent voice and everyone knows the code goes to one, to one hat.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Johnson?
Mary Jensen, Public Works Director. We met with uh Mr. Burrell, who was doing the preliminary estimate for us, trying to get better earthwork numbers um and look at the drainage. And we met with him last, last week and his partner, uh Ken Ward. And uh what we found out was that they were able initially right now because of the moratorium, hopefully, um make all the DRAs in areas that
The halt of permits, I believe, is the legal term.
The halt of the permits, um, put the DRAs in places that there aren't any houses right now and um do all the swells and everything in the piping. It loo, it looks good from uh an initial viewpoint. We are digging deeper into that. If somebody has already pulled a permit to build a house, then that is it, it makes it a different scale as far as the cost of that for us to purchase that property. But right now it's looking really good. We're really excited about that. Um, we have a schedule that at the end of September, uh Mr. Burrell will give all the, the plans and his costs to us, and these are uh just earthwork and stormwater. And he'll give that to us. We will add to that our um real estate costs and things like that. We'll put that in a package and have it here ten-ten for the board to look at and, and make a decision upon for the assessment. That is the timeline and that is our goal.
That is provisionally outstanding news. Thank you. And um I just want to say to the board, thank you for having the courage to stop the permits because this might actually make it affordable for them, an affordable level MSBU. If we had not done that, you know, every house that goes into eminent domain, the worse it gets. So thank you to my colleagues. Would anybody like to speak on this topic? Any board to comment? All right. Thank you. Um, item O, shout out to our Chair Ruthie Schleba. I hope you are doing much better and we will see you soon. And um so I can heckle from that seat instead of in this seat. And uh, Madam Attorney?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Open to the public. Would anybody like to address the board? Once again, three minutes. State your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Schmider and I already put it on the green paper. There was two different things that I needed to address. I heard you talking about there's more homes rather than commercial and it affects revenue. So something that I happened to come across, I had a conversation with property appraisers webs, with the property, someone at the property appraisers office and asked them, what happens when I die with my property? Not, you know, with the will and stuff, but she said immediately that the property appraiser is notified by the state of my death and the homestead exemption is removed. So I also was at the county building yesterday, Building Division and Land Use Office. I was in there for about two and a half hours actually speaking to different people and um I overheard someone say they wanted to have the water turned on in their name because their mother died. And so the person behind the desk said, you have to provide us with proof, and she did. So when I went up to pay my water bill, I asked, what happens? Do you notify the property appraisers office that water was changed into someone's name because of a death? And the reason why I ask that is because I know of a person that died out of state, and so the property appraisers office was never notified of the death. And the daughter is living in the house and has been for about five years now, paying the four hundred dollars and change in taxes based on the mother's homestead exemption. And I don't know if this is something, but I'm sure that's a loophole that people do all the time. I don't know if there can be a county ordinance that the Citrus County Utilities would, just as a, a method of cross-checking and making sure that people are paying the prop, the correct property taxes. If they notified them, then they would know, because if they're, if they die out of state, they're not gonna know. And that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I'm sure staff will look into that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for all you do. My name is Mike O'Connell. I live in Floral City. And about a year and a half ago, my wife, almost a year and a half ago, my wife and I moved here from St. Augustine. We're flatlanders. And um I was at the last commission meeting when the TDC open seats were announced. Um, I've applied for one of those seats and uh I believe that I could offer an independent conservative voice on that board. Hopefully, some of the controversial items that have arisen as a result of uh some of the things the TDC has worked on, particularly with Madden Media. Um, I think that uh having someone just maybe offering up a little different opinion might, might help squash some of those things ahead of time. So um if you'd like to um know more about me, um my phone number and email address are on my application, so uh I would like to, I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Would anyone else like to address the board? All right. Upcoming meetings, uh regular meeting August eighth, one o'clock right here. August twenty-second, one o'clock right here. September eleventh, one o'clock right here. Upcoming workshops and special meetings. Preliminary budget hearing will be tomorrow morning, Wednesday, July twenty-sixth. We have three of them. Eight thirty AM, Governing Body of the Special Library District. Eight forty-five, the Fire Protection Special District, nine AM, B O C C. Those will all be right here. We have a strategic planning status update Tuesday, August fifteenth at ten AM. La Canto Government Building, Room One Six Six. We're back here on September seventh at five oh one for a tentative budget hearing. And that is Thursday. We have a final budget hearing Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at five oh one right here. And finally, we have the Citrus Elected Leadership Summit Tuesday, October third at nine AM at Withlacoochee Technical College. And we are adjourned.